Pouring. I'm getting within a minute, so.
I was looking. I'm bringing. They were something. You know, it's just. I was about to call and sit back and. Right. All right. Yeah.
Uh, six o'clock, we call a meeting to order. Steven, you have the roll?
Yeah.
I got it just in the right order. Your all rise for the flag, allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose soul.
And then if I could get someone to move tonight's approval of tonight's agenda, please.
I'll move you through tonight's agenda.
In a second. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carried. On the consent agenda, all items in the consent agenda will be addressed with one council motion unless someone something they wish to discuss. I'd like to discuss some questions on F, H, and I answer. And the others. Then with the exclusion of F, H, and I, I would move the vast consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none carries. Ron, to your first item.
Yeah, this is just a memory, it's just me, I've probably noticed before we discussed before, on F, the fund balance report.
Yes.
We have a red number there for the capital project fund, fifty-six thousand already here in the hole, is that the street improvements we're waiting for FEMA on, or is that something else?
No, the four oh one that you're seeing in the preferred savings balance with a negative fifty-six, that is due to how the auditors last year wanted us to book some uh, the payments for the Main Street Development Project. Once our audit for twenty-two is done, we'll clear that out. And the reason for that goes even further back into twenty-one, when we started the project. Um, part of the funding was paid out of two fifty. And then after the twenty-one audit, they recommended us paying it out of um, a capital project fund, the four oh one. So in twenty-two, when the project continued, I started booking expenses out of four oh one, so it's gonna look like that until the auditors are done. Um, on the financial side for that project this spring. When I get my journal entries done, that should clean that up.
Well, that'll disappear later.
Yeah, yeah, it's just because they wanted, because it is technically a project.
Hmm.
And two fifty is for um, you know, technically revolving loans, even though we can loan ourselves money. Because there was two different years, the money came out of and stepped inside of, that's why it looks negative now.
Hmm.
But yes, it should balance itself out and clear it out with the details I've worked on with the auditors for the twenty-two audit.
Okay, thank you, this is a noticeable number.
Yeah, we, the, the fund itself typically has nothing in it.
Hmm.
It's just there to go in and out as you're working through a project because there was a gap in there two years. And the two different ways things were expense and revenue, and that's why I'm right now.
Hmm. And then on H and I, it's just the water and sewer, it's the same entry on both. And you notice we're over in computer supplies, we have about sixteen hundred budget, and we've spent about five thousand, is that the water meter?
That is, that is the handheld that you guys approved, yeah. Yeah.
Specifying, I thought that's maybe what it was.
Yep, that invoice got split evenly between the two departments.
So that was about five thousand plus, right?
Just about.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Okay.
Then would you move to approve items F, H, and I, we move that after explanation, let's approve items F, H, and I. Second.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Any further discussion on those three items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Everything in the consent amendment has passed.
That was Nick, Ron, and then Nick. Just to clarify, first and second was Ron and Nick?
Hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And first up. Is there someone for the blackboard? I think no one will move on. Public Works.
There was a lot for you guys this month, pretty quiet. You know, stuff around town, trying to get stuff organized for the move. What up? Anything for any of you, Karine?
I've actually got a couple things.
Good. But yeah.
How much stuff is in the uh, old L E C?
A lot.
A lot.
A lot. The old, the old law enforcement center lumberyard.
Oh, lumber.
Lots and lots.
Okay. And the building that's out there at the that little jet.
Move.
That's being
demolished and taken out.
Immolished and taken out.
Hmm, we talked about that two years ago.
Yeah.
It would have been gone last year, but somebody was laid up and not able to take it down last year.
No current possible use for it?
Oh, possibly, I mean, if you wanted to repurpose it for something, you're gonna dump a good bit of money into it, but if you wanted to get creative on something, I'd be open to hearing about it.
Well, my thought was is that the bar is gonna need someplace to put some of their stuff.
Good.
And I didn't think they really wanted it up in the
No room for it, it can't go up there.
Up, up in the rafters.
No, we've discussed this since day one, that the bar was gonna have to get moving on doing something. And I haven't heard a word about anything yet.
I just get concerned that we're gonna run into uh, you know, all of a sudden we're out of time, and we didn't have a plan.
So keep in mind also that.
We're gonna get there.
Yeah, um, we, we just, I know we've discussed this in other forums that once we get to a point of not needing the roll off from TK on site, that it's gonna relocate.
I think we're pretty close to there right now.
Down there, giving us the ability to start sorting through the lumberyard. And throwing what we don't need, which, and I've included the liquor store in that conversation.
Right.
That there is an option so that we don't have to haul everything away. But um, Mike and I have also had conversations of potentially having a outside storage unit if we absolutely have to out at the new site too, because we don't have storage for it, but it's my understanding that there's a quite a bit of stuff in that lumberyard that used to be the ponds that is unusable, and it's just collecting dirt and dust from years and years and years of being in there. That's correct. So.
Even stuff that's from the county.
There, there's a good percentage of that building that is, the contents are just junk.
They are.
The stuff that's been sitting there thirty years.
The county's not gonna take that stuff.
No.
A lot of that old law enforcement stuff that was not usable anymore, it should have been decommissioned a long time ago.
I would say there's very little to nothing in there that actually belongs to the county. There's some old blacked up P D stuff that's garbage, I mean, that's beyond garbage. It's sitting in the corner and it's been wet and everything else, it's, it's gone. That's what most of that building is.
Yeah. I just always looked at it as kind of your building over there, it's sitting there, but.
Well, it's, it's, it's kind of a, a hodgepodge, it really turned into a
Something grown.
Open the door and fling your crap wherever I want, it's.
And, and I'm not saying, you know, you're
Keep the back where we put our stuff pretty organized, I can't speak for everybody else that walks in and throws stuff in.
Yeah, and I mean, there's
I, I realize that out the pond and the golf course and people's home, library, there's
Yeah. Everybody's contributed over the years out there.
Yeah, we've got the garden planners over there on the backwoods fashion floor, which I think is gonna get decommissioned from my feedback from some of those members, and they're gonna do something else. Cause it is on its last legs, it can't get moved over to the wayside any much more without falling apart.
Going back to the, the contents that belong to the pond, um, well, the actual viable usable stuff in there, there's not that much.
Correct.
You know, there's a lot of kitchen bar equipment that I believe might be possibly traded in.
Yeah.
If it's useful at all to get some stuff thrown at the golf course. Um, other than that, I mean, Melissa may be speak to what's in there that you guys use on a regular basis, not much.
Not a lot.
Everything's basically just like everywhere else, we didn't have anywhere to put it. Nobody wanted to put it in the dumpster at that time when it should have been.
It's essentially gonna go the same way that. The old car shed might. We had someone that took it down and. Scrapped out what materials they could save and they didn't cost the city anything. And we were gonna do this building the same way. That person was hurt at the time wasn't able to do it.
Yeah, I'm just looking at. Any option we have for. Well. Mm hmm. Storage, because you're gonna need some.
Yeah. Like you said, I mean, they were made aware of that and everything and I've heard. What decisions have been made or what has been talked about?
Okay, so maybe we need to have something on that at the work session, I heard.
So I think. Our best. Our best solution is to either get a date as to when we can have that. Roll off relocated or get a date to get a roll off over there earlier. And then have the other one up in the new site. Removed so that. That the liquor department can actually start planning a cleanup day.
I can't put any kind of dates together for you on that, because I need to get my big equipment out of there first. And I don't know when I can start parking that.
In the new.
In the new shop yet.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I.
It's a.
We're at least waiting on.
Big of a delicate jungle right now for us to nail them.
Only I see that I'm, that's what I'm getting is that. You took one down, one all in the all.
It it's gonna, this is gonna come down to exactly what I was afraid is gonna happen. It's, we're gonna have a week basically where we gotta go through that building. That's what's gonna happen here.
So is there something that like? Maybe Sean and I could take a look at. Starting to. Going forward, I don't know when. We have to have everything.
You could, you could at least go in there with like. Red tape or something like that and mark or a marker and mark everything that's gonna be destroyed. So at least you know. Cause you can get, I mean, when you go into the first garage site.
Barker dots.
Okay, well, something, you know. Majority of the pond stuff is off to the north side, right?
No.
Of the.
The majority of it is back to offices, I would say. On the south side of the building and then yeah, there's quite a bit. The one room on the north.
So it it is accessible on. To get in there and I.
Think that stuff that's in that north. Corner. Is pretty much. Done.
Right, I think just about everything. I think if you guys went down there.
Mm hmm.
And spent two hours with a pickup down there, you could probably pull out. You know, what you want.
Was viable.
And everything else is there, there's less that's good.
That is going to be of any real use is going to be what we just put in after our remodel.
Mm hmm.
You know, our, the old flat top, the counter it sat on. Yeah. That auto fryer.
That's the stuff that.
We've just got.
Looking to possibly trade in.
To possibly do some stuff for the like all horses.
Because it's been sitting there for. Two years now. You guys aren't gonna have the user stuff ever again.
The only thing I'm just concerned is that flat top, it does work. So for some bad reason. Something goes wrong with the one I've got. I can't get an electrician to come in and put that in and run. I'm not down anytime.
You'll be down about two days trying to clean it up before you can use it.
I will work. That will take, I will take it from that part. That's my only concern with that is that flat top and I feel it shouldn't go too far. Out of our realm.
Which that's not that large of an area.
It's only a four, it's not even a four foot.
I feel as though with the remodel, that front storage room behind your beer, your front beer cooler, you should be able to find some room for it.
Anyway. That would be my only concern for the only thing to me that's valuable in there.
Yeah.
Is that flat top, because like I said, I can. I can have an electrician come in and plug that thing in and we're back up and running.
But on the short, on the short line. Going in there and marking everything you know, yes, you don't need.
Okay.
Or mark, making it easier and marking if something you want. Makes it a heck of a lot quicker.
Oh, good thing. You can work something out. Sean will be back from vacation this week, so.
Yeah.
Let's set space when she gets back.
I'm going through. Until Friday.
All you need to do is.
Driving same cloud, so.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that everyone is actually talking to each other.
Oh, yeah.
Figuring this part out.
Gee, we started the conversation in January. We just knew we couldn't do anything until. We got closer to being able to move in.
Right.
It'll be down to the wire, like I said.
A move is never easy.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter how big or small it is.
That's all I have, Mike.
Well, that's only one thing. That's not a couple of things.
Anybody else, anything for me?
Well, the the watch group for the public work, public safety, so we got pushed back to March fourteenth.
That is correct. The punch list is being pushed back to the fourteenth. That was due in part for Mike's presence. Yeah.
I was in there today and. I see Fuller hasn't done anymore since they had a couple of weeks ago. So we can't. I can't put trucks or anything in there until those grades and stuff are painted. I know that. That'll be the biggest thing. Once I can actually. Start putting some equipment in there, you know, we've started move. Of of quite a bit of stuff out of the old L E C up into our storage area. But getting the big stuff out of the L E C and over to the shop, that's gonna be, once that's done, then.